We are back to our regular, regularly scheduled council meeting. We had the, for folks just tuning in, we've just concluded a special council meeting in which we presented the Medal of Merit. We will begin this meeting by going into the minutes.
I have a motion by councillors Dufour and Kinnick, resolved that the minutes of regular council meeting of January 29, 2024 be approved.
All in favor. That carries.
And under Agenda Item 4, Declaration of Cunieri Interest, I haven't received any.
Any councillors with conflicts? Seeing none?
Then I have a motion by councillors Vezo Allen and Kinnick, resolved that the agenda for February 2020, 24 city council meeting as presented be approved.
All in favor. That carries.
And under Agenda Item 6.1, KPMG 2024 Audit Planning and Eric Pinos. Oh, I'm sorry. We think we'd be used to the planning at 5 o'clock by now. Old habits.
I believe that is 8.7.1 is our first item.
That is correct. That is application A1323Z OP 1050 Great Northern Road. I have a motion by councillors Vezo Allen and Kinnick, resolved that the report of the junior planner dated February 2020, 24 concerning rezoning application A1323Z OP 1050 Great Northern Road be received. And that council approve official plan amendment 250 and redesignate the subject property from rural area to commercial on land use schedule C of the official plan. Rezone the subject property from rural area with a special exception to rural area by repealing special exception 208 from the subject property and replacing it with a new special exception that waives the buffering requirement along the north lot line as required by section 4.9 of zoning by law 2005-150. And that the legal department be requested to prepare the necessary bylaws to effect the same.
Mr. Tenazzo, if you could give us a brief summary of this application?
Thank you, Mayor Shoemaker. The subject property is located on the east side of Great Northern Road, about 600 meters north of its intersection with Third Line. It's a flag shaped lot with a narrow frontage on Great Northern Road, which acts as the access. And then the developable portion of the lot is behind Guy's Autobody, which is on a separate lot. The subject property is owned by the same individuals that own and operate Guy's. And their application proposes to permit accessory storage in association with the existing body shop. The recommendation is to approve this application. And Nello Iannelli is present to speak to council should there be any questions. Thank you.
Welcome to council, Mr. Iannelli. Council, is there any questions of staff or of the proponent? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Saying no comments or questions, I'll call a vote on the matter. All in favor? That carries.
And Agenda Item 8.7.2, A1423Z 537 Black Road. Motion by councillors Dufour and Burney, resolved that the report of the junior planner dated February 2020, 24 concerning rezoning application A1423Z 537 Black Road be received. And that council approve the application as follows. Rezone the subject property from light industrial zone to light industrial zone with a special exception. Two, in addition to those uses permitted in an M1 zone, permit heavy equipment sales, maintenance and repair. Further to deem the subject property an area of site plan control. And that the legal department be requested to prepare the necessary bylaws to effect the same.
Mr. Tenazzo, if you can provide us a brief explanation of this rezoning?
Thank you, Mayor Shoemaker. The subject property is located on the west side of Black Road. It's about 300 meters south of its intersection with Second Line East. This application proposes to permit heavy equipment sales, repair and maintenance, which is really a slight upzone from the existing light industrial zoning on the property. Now, this entire block of properties in the area was initially identified for industrial development as part of the 2001 industrial land strategy. And it was later rezoned and red designated in 2005 as part of, as part of the city's comprehensive zoning by law project. It's certainly recognized that there are a number of existing legal nonconforming dwellings in the area. Notably, a block of three homes abutting the subject property to the north. Staff is of the opinion that the rezoning will, is well within the intended industrial development potential of the property. Or area, sorry. And furthermore, we're also of the opinion that given the proposed use and site plan configuration, there will not be any additional impacts to the legal nonconforming dwellings beyond those that are currently experienced from surrounding industrial uses and the heavy traffic volumes on this portion of Black Road. Therefore, the recommendation is to approve the application, subject to deeming it as part of under site plan control. So that among other things, high quality landscaping and visual screening of the compound area are constructed and maintained over time. The applicant Albert Giomi is with us via Zoom and is available to speak should council have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenazzo, and welcome to council, Mr. Giomi. Did you have anything beyond Mr. Tenazzo's explanation to add?
No, nothing at all.
Thank you. Council, questions of the applicant or of Mr. Tenazzo? Is there any individuals here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak in opposition to this application? Thank you. I will note that there was a, I don't know if it made it on the addendum. I believe it did. Email of opposition sent in that we all received. Let's see, no other questions? We can have a vote on the matter. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries.
Agenda Item 8.7.3, A224Z 68 Dacey Road. Motion by councillors Dufour and Kinnick, resolved that the report of the junior planner dated February 2020, 24 concerning A224Z 68 Dacey Road be received. And that council approve the application as follows. Rezone the subject property from single detached residential zone to low density residential zone with the following exceptions. One, reduce the required frontage from 20 meters to 17 meters. And permit both multiple attached dwellings and a single detached dwelling on the same property. And that the property be deemed subject to site plan control as per section 41 of the Planning Act. And that the legal department be requested to prepare the necessary bylaws to effect the same.
Mr. Tenazzo, if you could provide us a summary of this application?
Thank you, Mayor Shoemaker. The subject property is located on the east side of Dacey Road. It's about 90 meters south of its intersection with Queen Street East. Again, this is a flag shaped parcel with a 17 meter access to Dacey Road, which will be the driveway to and from the development. And the developable portion of the property, it's an internal lot that abuts the rear yards of single detached homes on four sides. The applicant or the application stories to permit a total of 21 residential units. 20 of which will be in single story, multiple attached or townhouse blocks, and then one single detached dwelling. This application is an appropriate infill development, which is consistent with the current intensification policies of the official plan. Therefore, it's staff rec, staff's recommendation that the application be approved. John McDonald is present to speak on behalf of the application should council have any questions. And I believe there's at least one neighbor who has indicated that will be in attendance this evening to speak against the application. Finally, there also, there are also a number of emails from neighbors on this matter, raising a number of concerns which are attached to council's addendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenazzo. Mr. McDonald, anything to add to Mr. Tenazzo's explanation?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just want to thank Mr. Zupa, our staff, for assistance through this, on this application. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Council, any questions of the applicant or of Mr. Tenazzo? Through Vezo Allen?
Thank you, through you, Mayor, to Mr. McDonald. In terms of the townhomes, are they going to be rentals or are they going to be for sale, owner occupied?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Townhomes be rentals, whoever is to be the owner and developer to also live within the building.
So they're, they're all going to be rentals, not owner occupied? One will be owner occupied? Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you, councillor Vezo Allen. Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Just seizure wise, people that oppose it will have a chance to speak after our questions?
Okay. And then I'll, if there are any questions arising from that, I'll circle back.
Okay. A question through you, Mayor, to Mr. Tenazzo. Constituent did reach out to me with a particular question, so I'm going to ask him. Mr. Tenazzo, you talked about density. Can you elaborate? These townhouses, did you say that it's going to still fall within the parameters of low density? Can you educate us on that a little bit further? Is this going to be excessive density?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the resulting density is about five and a half units per acre. Locally, anywhere from three and a half to about six units per acre is what we find in our single detached neighborhoods. Certainly, our east end subdivisions in and around chambers, they're on a gross density standpoint, they're anywhere from three to four units per acre. Again, this is five and a half units per acre, so we would, we would view this still as being low density.
Okay. And just looking at the map, off of Dacey, there's still a relatively new subdivision kind of mid-Dacey where they're gray buildings. I think they're also maybe duplexes. So can you give me an example? Would it be basically similar to the size of that particular subdivision, if you're familiar with what I'm referring to?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there's, excuse me, there's certainly been a fair, there, there is a fair number of townhouse developments in the area. Certainly, the former St. Hubert's School property and then east side subdivision, which is opposite that. Those are actually, I think, on the east side of Dacey Road, east side subdivision, that density is a little bit higher, probably closer to eight to 10 units per acre. And I don't remember off the top of my head what the density is on St. Hubert's, but it's probably similar to what we're seeing here today, about five and a half.
Okay. So it sounds like that might be a good representation of how much density we may potentially see with this new development. That might give us a little bit of a benchmark. Is that fair to say?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that's fair to say. I would suggest that in terms of, you know, townhouse development, which for us is generally characterized as medium density. This is on the lower end, much lower than what we normally see for townhouse developments.
Okay. My last and final question. We did late today receive an addendum listing all the concerns. Mr. Tenazzo, did you have a chance to go through all those concerns that other constituents have sent to the planning department?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have gone through them.
Okay. Are you able to address three of them at this moment with regards to how it looks? Many constituents have contacted me to confirm that it's going to change the whole look of the neighborhood. Are you able to basically address that concern as one?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would address that by saying when, when these neighborhoods and when much of Sioux State Marie was developed, it was done under a different type of planning regime. And it was done in a way that singles were put, like we very much segregated different housing types. That's not the way that planning is done today. Today, we try to go for a complete mixed neighborhood so that you get different types of people living in one neighborhood at different stages of their life. And generally, planning theory today is such that you want to mix neighborhoods and have different types of dwellings in one neighborhood.
Okay, that's fair. Again, as a Ward 1 representative, these are the questions that have been brought to my attention from my constituents. And I feel it's my responsibility to ask these questions. So I really appreciate your answers, Mr. Tenazzo. And I understand also, we all understand that in Sioux State Marie, we are lacking in rental accommodations. So this is still, I think, a positive. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, councillor Hollingsworth. Councillor Spina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll have a couple of questions, perhaps. I'm not, I'm not sure where every one of them will be directed, but if someone has the answer, I'd love to hear from them. A couple of questions as well. I received a number of calls from constituents as well, so I want to make sure that we do cover up all of those. The, the first thing, and I know we've, we've addressed this before with other developments. But is there a plan? I didn't see it. Perhaps I missed it. Is there a plan for control of rodents and other vermin that will be displaced as a result of the construction? Maybe, Mr. Tenazzo?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Spina. We, we do not have a plan to control vermin. That, that would be something that the applicant and the owner would have to deal with. Unfortunately, that's just an unfortunate reality of, of construction. This is already, it is a cleared area. It's not a treed area. There are certainly a few trees that might get removed, but ultimately there is no plan in place to deal with those types of issues.
Okay. So before we issue any permitting or anything like that for this, is, can it be a prerequisite that that's in place for the developer to deal with that? So if the residents who live there would not have to deal with excess rats, mice, other rodents coming to their properties?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm not aware of any legislation that, that we could leverage to require that. I, we could potentially ask if the applicant or their agent might be willing to look at something, but I, I'm not aware of any legislation right now that we can leverage to do that.
Okay. Yeah, and I noticed in the application, it's a five year build. I don't know that we've seen one that's been that long. And I, I, I get the sense that that's going to be quite disruptive for residents in this area. Is there a way to shorten that timeframe or is there a reason why it's going to be five years? To McDonald?
You missed here. I throw myself in mercy council for this, this answer. The business from the owners actually, three year build, however, with, in discussion, we want to be here on the conservative side with the council. So in reality, the business is three years. We want to give ourselves five years. Way that the labor market is, they financing, see the business. Three, three to five years is the reasonable timeframe to set up.
So when you say three to five years, I'm guessing you don't mean three to five years of construction, three to five years of from project beginning to end. So perhaps maybe two years or a year of construction? I know it's hard to say. I'm not asking you to stick to that. Three years. Minimum three years construction. Okay. There was, there are, in the plans, I see a swell for, for water or not wastewater, but rainwater or, you know, runoff and things like that. I see that the area, and you can see images online of the area, and I visited the area. I see that the area has been actually over, I don't know how long, but over a period of time been built up. You can see that that area has been built a little higher than the surrounding properties. And of course, with construction, I believe is going to come another buildup of properties in there. And I know that the area already, the residents already face watershed issues where their properties are getting a large amount of flooding. I don't see this swell as a solution to those problems. I see, I see more problems coming as a result of watershed from this area. I know myself, I can tell you in the area where I live, I have properties that were built up around me. And I get two feet of water in my backyard every spring that I have to wait three weeks or it dissipate. And then my yard is saturated for the rest of the season. And anytime I get a rain, of course, I flood again. I don't want to see these residents face that. Is there a way to add some kind of proper watershed so that residents won't face that? I mean, the other issue that comes with that is standing water and a whole other host of issues comes with standing water. So is there a way for us to resolve that in this plan?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a great concern. One important step in site control process is actually us working, sharing department. Address such as drainage, stormwater management, which we're legislating to do. You have to ensure that often runoff is mitigated such adjacent properties. We show based water management concepts on zoning applications. Something planned, planning is to do. Ensuring control, we, we develop the detailed designs where we get nuts and bolts and detail design to ensure the protection for adjacent property.
Okay. So the plan that you've presented now is not the final plan. They'll be for, this is just enough to get to the rezoning application is what you're mentioning. Okay. I know that the area is very well treed. And part of my concern is if the water does stand there for quite some time, it happened to me. The trees get saturated, they die very quickly. And these are very large, older trees posing an absolute risk to neighboring properties if they do die and fall down. As well, it creates quite a buffer between this site and the residences around this site. Is there a plan? We've had other applications with other developments. Is there a plan in place to keep that buffering zone of trees or kind of foliage in place to keep that privacy up?
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. It's part of the whole application process. Running department, look at buffering, actual fencing, tree buffers, ants landscape, landscaping. Other methods, visual screens to ensure privacy for future tenants of this property as well as.
Okay. So these are, again, things that would come later. Okay. Just a couple of other questions, sorry. And I know that this, again, is another area that is full of different kinds of wildlife. I know there's a lot of bears that go through there. There's a lot of other kinds of wildlife. And I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, perhaps, Mr. Tenazzo, this is going to be a private area where they're going to be responsible for their own garbage pickup and removal? Is there a plan in place or will there be a plan in place to mitigate any kind of risk involved in wildlife coming into these bins that are going to be stored there?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Spina. Generally, the, the bins are designed to be somewhat bear proof. And then it becomes a property standards matter, right? So that the, the contractor that's, that's being utilized is coming frequently enough to make sure that you don't have garbage sitting for long periods of time and starting to become smelly and things like that.
Okay. So it's something that would fall back to our property standards division for enforcement if it were a problem?
That, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct.
Okay. But in the meantime, they would have to submit a, a plan that would show adequate removal so that there wouldn't be an issue?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So really, what we, we don't look at operational matters through site plan control. What we're looking at is, is the garbage bin located in an appropriate location? Can the truck get to it easily? Those kinds of things. We're not looking at how often, or enforcing for that matter through site plan, how often the bins are being done.
Okay. The only other area I want to chat about is, I, I, again, because this is a private area, so snow removal is going to be an issue. Because city services won't be doing it. It'll be a private company doing it. And I believe there was a, a plan to have mailboxes and I think a bus stop 60 or 80 feet down Dacey Road. And it would pretty much cut through a bunch of houses to put sidewalk in and then have a bus stop in front of someone's, one, someone's home, a new person's home. Not far from where the entrance to this proposed building is going to be. I see, I just had a chance to look at it online. I see an image directly across the street from where the proposed entrance would be to this location, where there's already a Canada Post mailbox location. Would that be more appropriate or could that be a more appropriate place to put a bus stop instead of putting brand new sidewalks down the front yards of people's houses on, on Dacey and then having people congregate in front of their homes?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Spina. I saw that comment. We will discuss with transit. There, there might be the ability to tweak the bus stop locations a little bit to better service this development.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, those are, those are my questions. I just, that's a lot of things left unanswered before this development goes into, into effect. So I, and I get it, it's the, the initial rezoning application. Would this, and perhaps this is for Mr. Ver, would this come back before us again for approval? Or is this just the one and only time? This would be the only time if rezoned? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry. I'll, I'll get Mr. Tenazzo to actually answer that for the camera, so that, so that the public can know what the answer was as well.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Spina. So site plan control is a staff process. As the planning director, I've been delegated the approval authority. So it's, it's a staff process that does not come back to council.
Okay. Thank you. Those are all my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Spina. Any other councillors with questions? Mr. Tenazzo, is this the typical amount of information we have when a rezoning application appears before us?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. This is typical for an infill development of this nature where there will be site plan control. Certainly, council is aware there's been downstream capacity to make sure that the servicing downstream water and stormwater sewer water can accommodate it. And then there's a preliminary sort of stormwater management opinion that's also been done, just to make sure that at a very high level, the area can accommodate this development. So I would suggest that, yes, this is typical of, of what we see at this stage in the process.
Thank you, Mr. Tenazzo. Are there any residents here to speak in favor of the application? Any here to speak in opposition to it? Okay, we've got some, so I will, whichever one of you wishes to come up first. I'll just ask that you, after the first speaker, the subsequent speakers not reiterate what the first speaker said. So any new information that any other speakers wish to present. And I'll get your name and address.
70 Dacey Road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Several concerns. Sorry. The entrance exit. Concerns about when anything's going to happen with the construction. What it's going to do with the infrastructure. The homes. The fact that sorry, I'm sorry about that. The fact, the privacy, have some trees sidebar property. It's on the same side as the exit. Another concern is safety concerns if there's an emergency, that there's only the one exit to, to Dacey Road. Another concern is we have flooding. The fact that they're going to facing the land. And fact that the previous, he cleared the land and he had multiple trucks that come in. That, that bill has sat for many years. Just we'd be concerned that there might be something to do for environmental study. And because it's going to be homes there, people to live on. And changing infrastructure on Dacey Road. The septic, all the new development up further up. It's just, it will, it will add a strain to to the, to the, the road. And this water and, and this sewer. That's about it.
Thank you. Snoll, residents who wish to speak? Name and address if we could?
Shannon Boston, 60 Dacey Road.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me and, and allowing us to speak. Some concerns, and once again, thank you to both for, for bringing up those concerns. A lot of people were not able to attend today based on the time, unfortunately. The concerns were sent forward by email as asked. To add additional ones, mainly with the snow removal as well, is that is a secured secluded area. If there is a large amount of snow, where are they going to park to be able to remove the snow from the property? Dacey Road south of Queen is not as tight as Dacey Road north of Queen. So there's not enough area for vehicles of 21 families, 21 units to park in that area. Bay Street, short, single, one-way or dead end street, sorry, that also does not have the capacity to take vehicles on the side of the road to. There is so many different kinds of animals that are in that area. And we frequently do have bears and fox and raccoons as it is. So just claiming bear proof and, and knowing that they will have that, that is a big concern. Although I, I understand that there is processes that need to be put in place and I understand that there's preliminaries that need to be done. I feel that there's still a lot of missing information in order to do final vote on it. If we're looking at the plan that was placed before us at the last meeting we had, it was five years. There was going to be that area for drainage. Now that that's changing. Now it's not five years anymore. It might be three years. Now we're talking sidewalk change. Now we're talking design change. Now we're looking at. Now we're looking at the change of the bus stop as an example. There's just too many unknowns at this moment based on what we've been provided. So knowing what we know now, there are some very valid concerns. We bought in that area mainly because of the character and charm. We bought in that area because of the larger lot sizes and the lower density of population. Putting in twenty-one units in an area big enough, if I look at the math, similar to three lot sizes. In our area that would normally have a single dwelling unit on each of those lots is now going to have twenty-one. So although it might meet provincial requirements or city requirements, it also doesn't necessarily match up with character in term of that area. So there's very much lots of different concerns that we come with that. I'm not opposed to any kinds of development. I definitely understand that we need rental here. And I'm all for that. Twenty-one units is a little bit much in that small area. So again, thank you for hearing our concerns. I'm sure there's others that came forward. I won't re. Revisit all the other ones that were brought up, but thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask if there are other residents. Yes, thank you.
Cameron, I live at sixty-four Dacey Road. I'm to the right of the entrance exit of that property. I've lived there for many years and we've put up with years of dump trucks and heavy equipment going in and out of that property. Since the Batmans purchased it. And, uh, it shakes, it shook our house till my curio cabinet busted my collectibles. Um. The other thing is, uh, I believe I fully support developing the area, but I don't think it has to be twenty-one units. Uh, that's just like a big circus back there for us. Um. The other thing is the flooding. And the maintaining of that roadway. My husband and I have maintained that property from day one since we moved there, cutting grass, moving rocks and trees and. Glass and fox stands and now this is just an invasion of the neighborhood privacy. I'm totally against this zoning. I believe in the development, but it should remain single dwelling. Thank you. I appreciate your help.
Thank you. Any other residents who wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, Counselor Dufour, you had some questions arise from that?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, through you to, um, Mr. McDonald, just to follow off, uh, one of the residents was, um, asking. Uh, about the sanitary capacity in the area of Dacey as it relates to the new development. Um, I see here that you guys have, uh, done the sanitary flow capacity study. Um, and that it does have, uh, the capacity needed. Can you just confirm for us that the study that was done also takes into account the additional densities, uh, up on Sinclair and across on Dacey?
That's true, Mr. Mayor. That's correct. Let's take that and go.
Thank you very much. And, uh, just as another question, um, we've heard a lot about the, um. The size of the development back there. Um, I was looking here on your engineered site plan and, uh. I, I believe, so lot coverage provided seventeen point two percent. Is that correct for the size of the buildings? And you guys could have gone up to forty percent. Is that also correct? Okay, so you're using less than half of what would have been permitted. Otherwise, if you're looking at Peter, Peter can answer as well. Am I understanding that correct, Mr. Tenazzo, that this development uses less than half of? Its, uh, allocation, so to speak, of lot coverage in the zoning bylaw?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor DeFory. Yes, it's currently proposed it's a little less than half. Uh, of what would be permitted on whether it's a single detached lot or another lot. We permit forty percent lot coverage. That's not to say that they may come in and, and you know, people put sheds up and other structures. Uh, that, that would add to that lot coverage, but as we've stated, for a townhouse development, this is actually relatively lower density.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Dufour. Counselor Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, to our fire chief, uh, Chief Johnson. Um, a safety concern was raised about, um, entrance and exits. Do you have any concerns about safety of getting in and out or having a fire truck go in and in or out of this development?
Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Caputo. As long as it's built, the municipal specs, we're fine with it.
Okay, thank you. Um, my only other question is to, uh, Mr. Tenazzo. Mr. Tenazzo, if, if we were not to approve this this evening. Um, how many units could be put on this property as it is zoned currently?
Uh, through you, Mr. Through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Caputo. It, it's as currently zoned, um. You could certainly, you know, it would require a plan of subdivision because of the way the frontage is, right? So if you wanted to do individual lots under an R-two zoning, you'd have to bring a road in, which is twenty-meter right of way, a little bit wider. Than what they're proposing, but, but not that much wider. Um, let's say you could, you could fit. Three lots on either side. Um, as a matter of right right now. You know, there really is no such thing as single detached zoning anymore. So our zoning by law permits a secondary unit. In association with any single detached dwelling. And then the province has mandated that we go up to three units as a matter of right. And the feds are requiring up to four units as a matter of right. So. I guess if there's a soundbite here, the single detached zoning really no longer exists. So let's say you're. Let's say it's five lots that you could get in there. Really, as a matter of right, it would be up to fifteen units. And then with the federal requirements, you'd be up to twenty units at that point.
So essentially, even if this doesn't get approved, um, the, you're still looking at potentially twenty units on the lot.
Yeah, through, through you, Mr. Mayor to Counselor Caputo. Again, the, the densities that we're seeing nowadays are a lot higher than they were traditionally and, and when this. Neighborhood would have been initially developed.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's everything.
Thank you, Counselor Caputo. Counselor Hollingsworth, did you have anything you wish to add? I saw you.
I just want to make a comment. Um, my comment is I want to say thank you to the constituents that came tonight to speak. Um, it takes a lot of, um, courage to come with your concerns. And I just want to reiterate that I'm happy that the developers are going to be living in the community or in the neighborhood. And I would expect that the developers would be open to work with, um, neighboring neighbors that are surrounding this new development, this new subdivision. And I know that our planning department in the past have been very good at taking concerns. And actually sitting down with the developers to ensure that all the concerns are properly addressed. And I encourage that. Peter Tenazzo and his team continue to do that. But I just want to reiterate, thank you for coming tonight. And thank you for those that have emailed us and called us that couldn't come tonight. We do appreciate your concerns. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hollingsworth. I'd, uh, like to also thank those who came to speak, both in favor and opposition, the proponent and the, and the neighbors. Um, the reality is that, uh, when these properties were developed, uh, you know, anytime from probably nineteen fifty to two thousand and, uh, twenty-three. Um, the, uh, zoning rules were a lot different than they are today and, uh, the reality of. The housing shortage and the low growth of housing builds over the last decade or more. Uh, has meant that we are making up for lost time. We are not the only community in this situation. It's a issue across Canada where we are making up for lost. Building time by densifying properties. It is, uh, uh. Circumstances of the day and, uh, it'll certainly require, uh, adjustments, uh, in neighborhoods as it will require in this one, but I, I don't, uh. Uh. I don't see that there is, uh, uh, value in denying the rezoning when it presents a fairly reasonable option for a reasonably sized piece of property. So. I support this and, uh, I, uh, will call for a vote with that. All in favor? Any opposed? That carries.
Carries.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Brings us to the, the presentations.
The item six point one. A PMG twenty twenty-four audit planning and Eric Pino is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Mr. Pino. Floor is yours.
Mayor Shoemaker and members of council for, uh, inviting us here today to present the annual audit plan for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Uh, I'm Eric Pino. I'm a local partner here with KPMG, uh, and part of the Sault Ste. Marie, uh, group of companies as, as part of the, uh, the audit. The leading engagement partner, Oscar Poloni, sends his regrets. Uh, you would have met him last year. Uh, but this plan was developed in partnership with him as well as with Tiffany Chiketo, who looks after the PUC group of companies. To get consolidated into the financial statements. I'll touch on the highlights of the report and welcome any questions at the end, uh, if there are any. Planning our audit, if you just want to slide through. In relation to materiality, and the materiality balance for the year has been set at four point two million dollars. Uh, relative to three point nine million in the prior year. This is used to scope our audit and select our areas of, uh, risk. To ensure that we have appropriate testing and coverage to form our audit opinion. This is based on a percentage of benchmark and that benchmarks remain consistent with the prior year. Based on total revenues, so it's approximately two percent. And again, that is very consistent with the number of municipalities, uh, across the province. The information of this council, the number that they will be, uh, most concerned with is referred to as our audit misstatement posting threshold. And that's set at two hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's the value of which misstatements, if any, remain uncorrected, we will report back to this council. Uh, anything over and above that amount will work with management to propose a correction to them. Uh, and anything that does not get corrected, uh, would be considered trivial in nature and reported back to this, uh, this council as, uh, as an outstanding difference. The involvement of the audit hires us to use the work of a number of specialists, including actuaries and engineers. The most significant of which will be the engineering firm this year, uh, in relation to the adoption of a new accounting standard. Related to asset retirement obligations. So this is something that we've, would have been, uh, speaking with this group of management in this council with for a number of years now. Uh, it will result in both the current year and prior year numbers being updated to reflect, uh, legal obligations in relation to. Uh, retirement of certain assets. And this is consistent with all municipalities across the province. I know a number of you have worked with a number of other boards that have seen this standard put into place. Uh, and again, our firm is working closely with management to make sure that that, uh, accounting is, is completed correctly and will report back to this council. Any findings as a result of that. The audit for the municipality is considered a group audit, so there's a number of entities that are consolidated in the financial statements. Uh, including the PUC group of entities, uh, the Sault Ste. Marie Library and Tourism Sault Ste. Marie. And then this slide outlines the scope of work in relation to all of them. As part of our audit, we do, are required to assess risk and we do take a risk-based approach. Uh, so the risks that you see on screen there again are consistent with the number of municipalities. Uh, the one there at the top, relation to management override of controls, that's a requirement under professional auditing standards. I know oftentimes when you see risk of fraud, it can sometimes be of, uh, of concern. This is a requirement that we consider as part of every audit. We perform procedures to ensure that. Financial statements are free from, uh, material misstatement as a result of, uh, potential management override of controls. The rest of the risks are again consistent with what you would have seen in prior periods and we do outline a number of procedures that we perform as part of our audit. To conclude over the appropriateness of those balances. Terms of audit timeline, we actually started our audit back in, uh, December, working with the management team here at, uh, at the corporation. To plan our audit and scope our audit. Uh, this communication right now represents our planning. Communication to, uh, to council. Uh, we will start our interim audit procedures in the next, uh, few weeks here. And then report back with the, uh, the final audit and audit findings report, uh, hopefully by the end of May, early, uh, early June. The rest of the presentation just includes a number of required disclosures and appendices. Uh. Definitely want to thank Mayor Shoemaker and the members of council for having us here tonight and welcome any questions that, uh, are related to the audit planning report.
Thank you, Mr. You know, council, any questions? Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. Uh, through you, Mayor, uh, to Mr. Pino. Lot of valuable information. Um. Just going back to, um, I think it was page seven, page eight, you're talking PS three two eight zero, the accounting standards, um, asset retirement obligations, which. I know that technically that came into play by the province, I believe, is April first, twenty twenty-two. Um. I'm always wondering, have you heard anything else, any other rumors? Anything else that coming down the pipeline in the future with regards to accounting standards that we should be, um, on our radar now?
So there are a number of new accounting standards, uh, through you, Mayor, to, uh, to the counselor. Uh, this is the most significant of which and probably one of the largest changes that this council would have seen over the last, uh, five to ten years. Uh, the other standards that we see under development right now and for future implementation, we do not expect to have a significant impact to the municipality. Uh, but information that we can include is part of our audit findings report for the information, this council.
Okay, great. You're the expert, so keep educating us. The other question is that we in the past did have a finance committee. In your, um, professional experience, do you see other municipalities having an audit or a finance committee? Do other municipalities? Um, have these or as a best practice?
So through you, Mayor, it, it is quite common to have, uh, an audit committee. Um, oftentimes we do see them combined to a, to a certain extent, whether it be through a resource and finance committee or separate audit committee. Uh, but in terms of best practice, uh, we would consider having an audit committee for that purpose. You consider best practice. Um, in this respect, we do report to the council as a whole and oftentimes those responsibilities are delegated through the committee, report back to council. Um, but in our experience, very common through, uh, with the number of our clients that we work.
So if I understand correctly, it's very common for other municipalities to have either audit committee or finance committee. Is that my understanding?
Uh, oftentimes we see.
Okay.
Deal with relation, matters in relation to financing specifically, uh.
Okay, I like to see hopefully in the future that we may want to bring back that practice to our council. Another question, um. As you may know, um, I believe it's quarterly, we receive updates on our financial status where we stand. When you start your audit, will you be looking at how the information is shared with council? And will you be given suggestions on if the information that's being shared with us? Is, um, missing any crucial statements that may impact our decisions, may impact. On how we hypothetically allocate, um, assets or how we, um, allocate reserves to various projects. Or how we write off bad debt or report on financial resorts or allow to increase, reduce reserves and so forth. Um, will you be coming back with suggestions on how information is shared with council so we can make the best financial decisions?
But through you, Mayor, our audit is specific to the financial statements and the financial reporting. And, or in that they're free from material misstatement. Uh, as part of that audit, though, we are required to assess the, uh, control environment of the municipality. As part of that assessment, we do evaluate that information that goes to council. Though our audit opinion and, and what gets reported back to this council. Uh, is very specific to the balances in the financial statement to ensure that they're free from material misstatement.
Okay, I'm glad you elaborated on that because I noticed that in your report, you mentioned about, um, statements and material. So. Um. With regards to your group audit, you listed the PUC Services Inc., you listed PUC Inc., PUC Distribution. And obviously you listed them along with the library because they fall under our umbrella, correct?
That is.
Okay, um. What continues to bother me is that, um, I understand our mayor represents us, um, at the PUC. But it's my understanding that we do not have a council person on the PUC board. In your professional opinion, do you think that would be best practices to have a person on? professional opinion, do you think that would be best practices to have a person on the PUC board that is more in tune to the day to day?
Councilor Hollingsworth, I don't sit on the PUC board, just to be clear, but I also think that that's outside of the scope of what Mr. Pino is here to advise us on.
Okay, fair enough. Let's see, I have two other questions. And the last question, with regards to, you'll start to do the audit. In the future, have you done any basically spot audits that are just not part of the schedule, just to make sure our controls are being followed? Do you do spot audits?
Through you, mayor, our audit approach is a combination of both control testing and substantive testing. That is done through various interim audits throughout, throughout the year. So as we build up to the year end, in terms of a spot audit, as, as was mentioned, it's not something that we would, is part of the financial statement audit at the request of the council. If that's something that would be of interest, we can form that, but it is outside the scope of the, the external audit engagement.
Okay, great. Again, thank you.
Just to follow up on that particular point, if you found something off in, in your, you know, your, your investigation that you do, you would presumably delve deeper into that to be able to report to us?
Correct, Mr. Mayor. So as a result of any of our audit procedures, any outliers or nominees that identify or any differences would require further investigation under professional auditing standards, and ultimately would go down the channels to be able to provide, ultimately conclude and provide an opinion on the financial statements. Anything in relation to significant control in financial reporting would be a required communication back to this council. I am happy to share, there hasn't been one of those findings since I've been involved over the last 10 plus years, and even prior to that. But for the information of this council, if something was to come to our attention, that would be communicated as part of our final audit.
Thank you. Any other councillors with questions? Seeing that, thank you. Your presentation, Mr. Pino.
And under agenda item 6.2, Sault Ste. Marie Public Library Strategic Plan, Matthew McDonald, chief executive officer is in attendance.
Welcome to council, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Greco. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Many familiar faces here. It was a pleasure. Mr. Mayor, members of city council, I'm Wayne Greco. I'm chair of the public library board. I stand before you today with a shared commitment to the enrichment and empowerment of our community through access to knowledge, resources, and opportunities. Is with great privilege and purpose, I present our strategic plan, roadmap crafted with careful consideration and dedication to serving the diverse needs of our city. Together, we embark on a journey of collaboration and progress, ensuring that our library remains an inspiration and learning for future generations. Having in front of you is the strategic plan. CEO Matthew McDonald will share the highlights. Thank you.
Might I say how great it is to be in front of council without having to ask for money? So our strategic plan consists of priorities, 17 goals, 73 objectives, and 270 action items, many of which cannot be seen in the public document. In addition, our board has adopted a new mission statement and vision statement for our library. Our values have been updated, and to reflect the direction the library intends to take over the course of the next five years. So I'm sure you all had an opportunity to look at the document itself. As many parts of the plan that are not in that actual document, so I just want to go over some key objectives to give you a greater sense of direction we are going. So under the first priority of community engagement, we intend to foster relationships with local organizations, schools, and businesses to strengthen libraries' role as a community hub. To support the city of Sault Ste. Marie's cultural plan by working in collaboration with city departments and by participating in community events throughout the municipality. To collaborate and partner with local organizations to support community well-being. Explore opportunities to provide library services in areas of the city without nearby library locations. Improve communication between the public and social services by providing those in need with information about community resources, and promote a sharing culture through library lending services and programs to reduce waste and protect the environment. Or inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility, some of our key objectives are to ensure the library's collections reflect the community's diverse backgrounds, cultures, languages, and experiences. To encourage understanding of truth and reconciliation and celebrate indigenous cultures through library programming and services. To incorporate accessibility into our facility plans and resolve accessibility issues as they arise. To engage and support new Canadians and immigrants through programs and resources that facilitate cross-cultural engagement. And to encourage youth engagement, empowerment, and library programs and services. Our marketing priority, key objectives include increasing awareness of libraries' value to the community through marketing. Position our website to better meet our community's needs by facilitating access to relevant information amongst the myriad of digital information and resources, and to build customer relationships, awareness, and appreciation of our services through personal interactions. For heritage and culture priority, we plan to collaborate with local heritage institutions, help observe our history, participate in community cultural events and celebrations, increase access to historical collections and archives through digitization, and online access. Provide opportunities for local experts and knowledge keepers to share their knowledge, skills, and experience with the community. And finally, our service excellence priority, some of our key objectives is to distinguish the Sault Ste. Marie Public Library as a leader in the Ontario library community. To review the public's points of contact with the library to better understand how we can meet or exceed their expectations. To invest in capital improvements to maintain the historic James L. McIntyre Centennial Library, and to ensure the library is a safe, accessible, and well-being community hub for all to enjoy. We're already making great strides. Since we finished developing the five-year plan at the end of last year, we've already made progress, 21 of our action items. And over the next few years, you can expect to see great improvements in your library's services. I would be happy to speak further if you have any questions regarding our.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Counselor Vazwell.
Thank you, Matthew. In terms of accessibility, are all staffed AODA certified, or do they go through the training?
Yes, we have two different AODA trainings, one's access forward, and then there's another one through the government as well.
Okay. Wonderful. Wonderful. And I just want to say your C.S. Lewis quote in your plan is, I have it framed in my office. So yeah, it's a, it's a great quote, really appreciate it. Fully support the library, and I would recommend that you reach out to Diane Morale, our accessibility coordinator. She has a really great document in terms of language and disability that I think would be beneficial for your staff. Like, we know right now with the autism community, it's more near diverse rather than saying unless they say that they are autistic. And if it's, if someone has a physical impairment, or if it's hearing or sight, Diane has a really great document that outlines what the preferred titles are now, whereas from, you know, other words that were used before. So definitely reach out to Diane. It definitely was useful for us at the accessibility committee, and would probably really be helpful for you and your library staff.
I'll look over our accessibility plan with her.
I'm sure she would do that. And you know what? Come to an accessibility committee meeting. I think that would be a really great way for you to connect with all of us at the committee, and just reach out to Diane, and she can schedule that. That would be really, really wonderful.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions, Counselor Vazwell? Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, through you, mayor. Always good to see you both, Sevia Wayne and Matthew. I'm just curious, how has it been going now with the new increase in security?
We've definitely seen improvements. The staff are much more relaxed and feel much more secure now that we have a new security company in sight. I just recently did some onboarding with the new security company, and there's going to be a few bumps, but we were dealing with the issues as they occur, and I can tell you that staff are very relieved.
Good. That's, you deserve it. Fantastic. Just a couple of the questions and comments. I just want to say, very attractive, the phrase, I really enjoyed reading the one-stop, endless possibilities. That captures it perfectly. As we've talked about over the last number of years, libraries are changing. And Matthew, you're doing a great job in leading a wonderful, positive change. So that shouts out a huge message that a library offers a lot of educational learning, mind-blowing opportunities. Basically, when you visit the library, if you want to expand your thinking, your cognitive thinking, visit the library. Having said that, our curiosity is the word library going to be changing, or what's the trend? Are people still saying library, even though you're capturing so much more?
Yes, there have been some changes in the past where some libraries have actually changed their name to ID Exchange in Southern Ontario. But traditionally, we're sticking with library and just redefining what library means to the community.
Right. And I also enjoyed reading your vision. In your vision, you state promotes literacy. And correct me if wrong, but I think you use the word literacy for many reasons. One, it's not just for literacy and reading, but you have done a wonderful job on computer literacy as well.
Yeah. Literacy is a very expansive term for us. So we, we consider financial literacy, civic literacy, math, and reading in addition to computer skills and other skills.
Excellent. So again, going back to what you said, one-stop, endless possibilities. Another point, another question. Was there in the past, did we have a library bus where it'd go out to the community?
We would be going pretty far in the past, but yes, the library did have a bookmobile at one point. It is something that in our strategic plan, we would like to explore the idea of as well. So we will be, over the next few years, developing a business case, either to develop a mobile library service, or like an alternate library service, such as book lockers, book vending machines, or another location. So we want to look at the various options there are to provide library services within.
Okay, great. I know that in my ward, in many wards, people are enjoying the little book stand, little book house. In your strategy, I don't think I heard anything about a fundraising strategy. Is there something around fundraising under your strategy?
Certainly, there's a component to it. When we look at the various actions that we want to accomplish, we're going to be looking for financial backing, and it won't necessarily be for the council. We will look at grants, so accessibility grants. So if one thing that we're looking at is having special technology at our desks for those with hearing aids, that you might see in grocery stores right now, you see the little symbol at the checkout desk with ear. So we're looking at incorporating that kind of technology in there and finding funding sources to assist us with, with implementing those kinds of technologies and plans into our library.
Okay, that's great. Do you have donors now? I'm assuming that people do make donations, not, you know, books, but financial donations?
We do have some financial donations. There is a foundation that donates to us annually. We would always love to have more donations. There's a lot of legacy giving as well. It's very unfortunate when people pass, but we are kept in mind with wills and donations at those time periods. And people can make donations through our website, through PayPal, and stuff like that, too. So there's many ways to give to the library, and we're very accepting of them.
I'm giving you this time to pitch. So once again, you can go to your website? Is that why I heard?
Exactly. You can go to our website, and it's a big red button, Wayne says. Yeah, it's prominent on our website, and it's under our about us section. And there's many ways that you can give to the library, and we appreciate what the community can contribute.
And just one last comment. It's my understanding, I'm using US statistics, but you probably can help me with the Canadian side. I understand that 2014, 2020, US libraries' average spending per person of physical materials decreased by 6%, while their average per person spending on electronic materials increased by 31%. Is that a fair comment for the Canadian side?
Yeah, it's fairly accurate. What we've seen in terms of trends with electronic resources is that they eventually get leveled out. And so we, there's no fear of the electronic completely replacing the, the physical material. What we found is it supplements it for some people. I myself really enjoy reading a book, but I also enjoy downloading a book onto my phone and listening to it. So people are accessing medium in various ways, and we try to meet the needs of the community, whether you want a physical item, or you want to read something on your Kindle or your tablet, then we provide you that access.
Thank you so much to you both, to your entire team. See that Jamie is here and other team members from your board and your staff. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor Hollingsworth. Counselor Dufour?
Thanks, Mayor, and thank you to Matthew, to Wayne, and I also see Jamie here in the audience, and all the members of the library board. I really appreciate all of the work that I know goes into a strategic plan. I was part of doing the last one many years ago. So I'm really excited to see the new plan. I just wanted to share how much myself and my family appreciate using the library. We're really frequenting there on Saturdays, on the weekends. I've really noticed the, the extra security there. One thing that was really neat that we saw this past Saturday is the downtown ambassador program actually has the library included on their route now. They come into the lobby, they come, they do a sweep through the buildings, say hi to folks. It's, it's really nice to see. It's nice to see, like you said, the, the staff at ease now. And it's something that I think this council can put some pride in, and really looking forward to seeing how you guys build out your strategic plan with the implementations. That newcomer library cards is one thing I'd love to see more of. Newcomers in our community are some of the most enthusiastic supporters of a lot of our free events, and I think the library is a great example of a place where they get some awesome service as they are welcome to our community. So thanks again, guys, and keep up.
And agree more. Thank you.
Awesome. Have a good one.
Thank you, Counselor Dufour. Other councillors with questions or comments? Thank you for coming. I think it's, it's a great document that you've prepared, and it sounds like a lot of input and outreach went into it. So I am looking forward to seeing it unfold.
So thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Counsel, that brings us to the consent agenda. Councillors with items on consent. Counselor Vazwell.
Broke it.
Technological difficulty.
Thank you. Through you, mayor, my first item is item 7.1.
Yes.
And just a comment, not a question. Very pleased that you received a response. And both Counselor Kaputo and I were fortunate enough to have some time with Minister Williams at Roma. And Minister Williams was actually here in Sault Ste. Marie on January 18th. And I think it would be really, if, if we could reach out to, if you could reach out to our MPP, Ross Romano, so that the next time Minister Williams is, is in this location, in this vicinity, if we could have a sit down with her, and especially with the Agoma Council on Domestic Violence, I think that would be, I think she would be very welcome to that. And I think that would be a good way for us to communicate, you know, the tragedies that, that happened here, and working toward some better services and opportunities with intimate partner violence and the partnering agencies that are assisting those that are afflicted with that. I, it's still very raw, and I, I think we need to continue to have the dialogue about what happened here in Sault Ste. Marie, and what we need to make sure that that never happens again. So thank you for the letter, and Minister Williams is very engaged and very much invested in, in what happened here in Sault Ste. Marie. So I think that would be a really good meeting for us to have with her when that's possible.
Thank you, Counselor Vazwell. And I agree absolutely. I did attempt, once I learned of her attendance to here several weeks ago. Thank you, Councillor Vezo Allen. I agree absolutely. I did attempt, once I learned of her attendance to here several weeks ago, just attempted to seek out a meeting, but it was on the same day and she wasn't able to. But absolutely, we wish to continue this dialogue to make sure that it's not just exchanges of letters, but exchanges of ideas that lead to action. So thank you for that. Anyone else on 7.1? Okay, seeing none, Councillor Vezo Allen, other items on consent?
Yes, 7.2.
Yeah.
And then probably Madison.
I think Ms.
Or Rachel. Concerning the the Beer Festival, is it a requirement with AGCO that we deem it a municipally significant event for them to be able to get their appropriate licensing for this event?
I'll let the deputy clerk answer. It's her report. Through you, Mayor Shoemaker, to Councillor Vezo Allen. This is the first step in the process. So yes, the proponent does need the city council to declare it municipally significant to apply to the AGCO for their special permission permit.
And then in terms of the rest of the event, especially with the license to occupy, are we able to add, and that might be a Karen question, requirements such as security, that sort of thing, because it is from noon to seven, I noticed. So it is mostly daytime. So there would be, I'm assuming, families, that sort of thing. So can there be a requirement in that license to occupy, a license to occupy for additional security in that area?
I can certainly start, and if Karen wants to add anything, I'll pass it to her. But as part of the requirement going forward, if it is declared municipally significant, the next step would be to get the AGCO permission. And in parallel, they would be applying to us for a road closure and event permit and subsequently a license of occupation. As part of the application will be circulated to all of the proponents, including police services, fire, APH, and a number of other groups to comment on the application and ensure that any safety or compliance concerns are met by the proponents. So we've already circulated the current application, and security has been something that has been brought up already. We have it as a something we're going to look further in as part of the license of occupation. So it's definitely something we can add in.
I I think it's great to be bringing something like this to downtown. That's what we want, but we want to make sure that it's done well and done safely. So thank you very much, Madison.
Thank you, Councillor Vezo Allen. Any other councillors on 7.2? Seeing none, Councillor Vezo Allen, other items on consent?
This will be my last one, 7.7. The accessible baseball fields and Pat's there from Sioux-Munder Baseball, so thank you very much for coming. They presented previously their plan to set up the Accessibility Committee last week, and I just want to, I'm really happy to see this happen. I spent many years at the baseball field. My youngest was in competitive baseball. But I am happy to say that the Accessibility Committee unanimously supported the purchase of the adult change table in the amount of $6,000. So that was approved last week through the Accessibility Committee and looking forward to working with Sioux-Munder Baseball and making our facilities where they need to be in terms of accessibility and definitely really appreciate the dedication of all the volunteers at Sioux-Munder Baseball. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councillor Vezo Allen. Other councillors on 7.7? Just note that we hosted a fairly major baseball tournament this summer. I had the opportunity to attend that, and it was stemming from my discussions there that it was suggested there might be some funding envelopes available for these types of upgrades. So hopefully, we will see that come to fruition and have these improvements implemented, because I think that would do be a great enhancement to services that we offer there. Thank you. Councillor Vezo Allen, those are all your questions?
That's it.
Okay, I've got Councillor Bruni on 7.3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Lamming, Agenda Item 7.3, Third-Party Transit. Just a simple question. How does the city monitor the service and the conditions of the vehicles? Which is a concern that I've received occasionally.
Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Bruni, we have our maintenance garage that inspects all of the 11 parabass units that we use. And our third-party provider also has an inspection process that they use as well. There was 43,000 rides for parabass last year. And of that, 12,831 were accommodated by a third-party provider. There was only 290 rides that weren't able to be accommodated, so it's a pretty good performance record with conjunction with City Transit Parabass Division and also the third-party provider.
Thank you very much. That's it.
Anyone else on 7.3? Councillor Bruni, any other items on consent? Sorry, Councillor Bruni, any other items on consent?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Other councillors with items on consent? Councillor Caputo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to talk about 7.8, the New Year's Eve ball drop. I don't want to jinx this because I'm really happy with the result here. And I'd like to thank Mr. Lamming for this report. A couple of comments. I am, I look forward to the implementation of this, and I've had a ton of positive feedback about it. People are really looking forward to having something to do on New Year's Eve, but also there has been such a positive spin come from the plaza. And so I'm really happy that you agree that we should host this at the plaza. I I just have had so many constituents contacting me and telling me how much they're enjoying it. So I know it has been a really tumultuous process to get to where we are. So I think it's really important for everyone on the staff side to hear the positives, because I think you've probably heard the negatives for far too long. So kudos on that. I just wondered if, so we've come to the conclusion about potentially dropping a puck. And I'm sure everyone, aside from me in Sault Ste. Marie, is really excited about that. I just wondered if there is any room to potentially discuss something aside from a puck? Or I I get that hockey is really important here in the Sioux, and I appreciate your enthusiasm in bringing this forward. I just think sometimes we are selling ourselves a little short on just like the whole Hockey Town thing. So is there any room? I see it says to issue a poll about the two options. I wondered if there is any room to maybe expand that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Bruni. Well, thanks for the comments on that. And one piece of news, we just found out before council that will probably relieve some of the individuals in this room that Green for Life Environmental has come forward, and they're going to be supporting the full $16,000 cost for the the draw-up this year. So a testament to that company. And from your comment, it was thought from the committee that met that if we had two choices, it would make it easier. And that's why the ball came forward. And also the puck, it is going to be constructed by our Public Works team. So they said they could make the ball and the puck with the LED lighting within-house. So it depends what else would be considered if that could be done in-house, because that cost portion was done for 6,000. If we had to go outsource that, it'd likely be triple, triple that cost probably, so.
I'll leave it then.
Okay.
No, I'm I'm just really happy that this turned out the way that it did. And I I think we could like drop my lipstick at this point, and people would be excited. So I'm I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of it. I know Public Works has done a phenomenal job with our tree lighting, and so I'm sure it's going to be another really exciting event. And, you know, the Downtown Association is behind it, and now I'm hearing that news. I'm just really excited. So thanks for that.
Thank you. So Caputo, Councillor Gardi on 7.8?
Yeah, I'm just going to piggyback on Councillor Caputo. It was a, it was a great idea. The information brought forward was 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 very, very helpful. And the news about GFL is kind of the ball on top of the cake, if you will. That, that, that being said, I'll I'll echo Councillor Caputo in the sense that I think our community has had and often has many opportunities to celebrate our rich hockey history. And I think personally that we have a a logo which I think could kind of be crafted into a 3D colorful ball to drop from the crane if Public Works is able to manage something like that. So that's my suggestion, and I'll just put it out there. Thanks.
Councillor Gardi, Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that, Councillor Caputo, thank you for bringing this to the table. It was a great idea. And I just want to, through you, Mayor, to Mr. Lamming. And I believe the last time, first time this was brought out, we talked about potentially having a contest where the schools can be involved to create some spirit. I can appreciate that you may get a number of ideas, but again, when you looked at Toronto, they did have a contest for the name of the rafters, and it created a lot of community spirit. I know your team is very creative. They can stick handle this, no pun intended. You can stick handle this, that may be a fun contest amongst the schools, amongst our young children, can bring some real good creativity. And I do appreciate what you're saying by cost, but you might be surprised. Again, I'm just going to reiterate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hollingsworth. Other councillors with questions on this? Okay. Councillor Caputo, other items on consent? Other councillors with items on consent? Councillor Hollingsworth?
Through you, Mayor, to, I don't know if it's Mr. Anderson or Shelley Shelsna here. Can you tell us how much again is in the tourism? I'm sorry, item 7.11, Tourist Development Fund. How much money again is in that particular fund? Just curious.
You, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Hollingsworth. As of end of 2023, we had $123,150 remaining. That will be topped up this coming year, now that we have the Matt Collections in for the full year 2023. And I won't give that number unless he feels comfortable doing so. So I'll turn it over to him to decide. I know we're in the process of wrapping up year-end, so Matt Collections always come a bit later.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the Matt Collection transfer at the end of 2023 is about 450,000, if I'm correct. So you can you can increase that amount by 450,000 at this point.
Okay, great. Thank you. And through you, Mayor, back to Mr. Anderson. The Alaveira Pitch. How much time, how much advance notice do you need from a group when they're asking for funding? In other words, when do they need to have their application in? Like, is it two months, three months? Can you give me the Alaveira Pitch? Because I know there's a lot of wonderful community groups out there that might be applying.
Absolutely. We've handed out several hundred thousand dollars worth of funding for events. You know, we're proud to say that we've been able to support a large number of tourism-related events and certainly something we look forward to continue doing year over year. We do ask that applications come in at least 90 days in advance. If it's a particularly large event, ideally 120. That gives us sufficient time for our team to to work with the organizers to help support their event and obviously market it to individuals from outside of the community.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Thank you, Councillor Hollingsworth. Other councillors on 7.11? Seeing none. Any other councillors with questions, items on consent that they'd like to ask questions about? Councillor Kinnick?
It's going, my question is on 7.13. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Odolino. Regarding the wage grid, where the adjustments that's proposed here tonight, where we had the increase in June 2023 for lifeguards due to the market comparison demand, did this solve our issue of vacancies in these positions?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Kinnick. It did significantly help when we did that that market change back in June. We were able to attract and, more importantly, retain a lot of the lifeguard staff. We were able to go ahead and offer some more programs, lessons, swim programming as a result of that. So I would say it's something that definitely had an impact.
Okay, thank you very much. I know that's something I've got a lot of concerns from constituents about was swim lessons. They were very difficult to register for for their kids. Just wanted to make sure that we're moving in the right direction there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Kinnick. Other councillors with questions on 7.13?
I've got more of a comment on that one. We, well, I guess it is a question first. We budgeted for this increase at budget time, correct?
Sorry.
So it, this is the type of report that I think would be helpful to have either at budget time or in advance of budget time to explain some of that cost increase that we're budgeting for. Ideally, however, I think this is the type of report that should come to us when minimum wage increase happens. Because our our grid is going to have to be adjusted. You know, we learned that, I think, from what is set out in this report. So as the minimum wage increases on an annual basis, I think it is now based on CPI, a report like this should be brought to us contemporaneously with that, I would think. Comments on that? Thank you.
Seeing no other councillors with questions on the consent agenda, we can have a vote on that. Is the motion read? No?
Councillors Dufour and Bruni resolved that all items listed under date of 202024 Agenda 7 and Agenda B approved as recommended.
All in favor? That carries.
Take us to Agenda Item 8.8, Appointments to Boards and Committees. The first is the Anti-Hate Advisory Committee, and I need two members of council.
Caputo? Councillor Gardi? Seeing no, who's interested?
Okay, then I'm going to change over to Councillor Segordo. Just give me a sec to. It's two names in there. So I have a motion by Councillors Segordo and Hollingsworth, resolved that Councillor Caputo, Councillor Gardi, Mayor Shoemaker as ex officio, Jeff Arbus, Saber Assey, Rui Bebe, Pat Carter, Toyo Ibemi, Dave Mornecks, Gunkar Singh, Aaron Smith, Brendan Sutherland, and Amanda Zook be appointed to the Anti-Hate Advisory Committee from February 202024 to December 31, 2024.
All in favor? That carries.
So it's been this. And Agenda Item 8.8.2 is the Cultural Vitality Committee to fill vacancies there. This is a motion by Councillors Caputo and Hollingsworth, resolved that Rebecca Evans, Nyla Moss, and Lee Rendell be appointed to the Cultural Vitality Committee from February 202024 to December 31, 2024.
All in favor?
And the Municipal Heritage Committee, there are four vacancies. However, appointments to the Municipal Heritage Committee are done by bylaws. That appears under Agenda Item 12. And that is Emily Boucher, Tammy Johnson, Lee Stoyle, and Jamie Van Hafton to the Municipal Heritage Committee. There's one vacancy on the Tourism There's one vacancy on the Tourism Sault Ste. Marie Board. And I have a motion by Councillors Caputo and Hollings resolved that Melissa Co be appointed to the Tourism Board of Directors from February two thousand twenty twenty four to December thirty one, two thousand twenty four.
All in favor? That carries.
And under Agenda Item eight point eight point five, the Sault Ste. Marie District Social Services Board. As councillor Dufour is stepping down, it creates one vacancy. And Councillor Gordo has indicated an interest in serving on that committee.
Any other councillors wish to put the name forward? Or we will leave it in Councillor Gordo's capable hands?
So that then is the motion by Councillors Vezzo Allen and Kinnick, resolved that Councillor Gordo be appointed to the Sault Ste. Marie District Social Services Administration Board from February two thousand twenty twenty four to December thirty one.
All in favor? Carries.
Will bring us to Agenda Item nine point one. And that is a motion by Councillors Dufour and Hollingsworth. Whereas current provincial municipal fiscal arrangements are undermining Ontario's economic prosperity and quality of life. And whereas nearly a third of municipal spending in Ontario is for services in areas of provincial responsibility and expenditures are outpacing provincial contributions by nearly four billion dollars a year. And whereas municipal revenues such as property taxes do not grow with the economy or inflation. And whereas unprecedented population and housing growth will require significant investments in municipal infrastructure. And whereas municipalities are being asked to take on complex health and social challenges like homelessness, supporting asylum seekers and addressing the mental health and addiction crises. And whereas inflation, rising interest rates and provincial policy decisions are sharply constraining municipal fiscal capacity. And whereas property taxpayers, including people on fixed incomes and small businesses, can't afford to subsidize income redistribution programs for those most in need. And whereas the province can and should invest more in the prosperity of communities. And whereas municipalities and the provincial government have a strong history of collaboration. Now therefore, be it resolved that the province of Ontario commit to undertaking with the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, a comprehensive social and economic prosperity review to promote the stability and sustainability of municipal finances across Ontario.
Counselor Dufour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From time to time, on our time on council, a lot of you will know this. We we have motions circulated. We have folks approaching us to get our support with certain issues. You know, and oftentimes we do lend that support and we do call on the government to do certain things. I want to suggest to you that this motion here tonight is is a little bit different than a lot of those motions that typically come to us. What this motion is getting at really cuts to the core of a lot of the conversations that we have around this table, especially around budget time. We, as a council, because we've recognized the constrained nature of our constituents' budgets and our dependence on property taxes, we are always laser focused on how can we possibly save as much money as we can. The reality of these conversations that we have around this table is that under the current fiscal framework in Ontario, those kinds of conversations are futile on a systemic lens. Like when we zoom out and we look at the big picture in our community and across this whole province, there is no feasible way that property taxes are going to pay for the things that our communities require. Our property taxes are not going to solve the mental health and addictions crisis. There is no way our property taxes are going to pay for the growth in infrastructure needed to accommodate the new residents of our communities that we're expected to have over the next five to ten years. This motion calls upon the province to start to work with cities through AML to start having that more systemic conversation. And that is the conversation that that quite frankly is overdue and that we need to be having not just around this table, but across our whole province. I think now is a really interesting time because I think that the province is a lot more amenable to such conversations. I think that they've seen the results of some of their past attempts to address things like housing and growth. And there's a, I would suggest a widespread recognition that municipalities are an absolutely critical partner in this effort. And I think Sault Ste. Marie should be a part of the municipalities calling on the province to to participate in this conversation. It's a critical one for Sault Ste. Marie. As our tax base, as we discuss every time a budget cannot sustain significant increases. And it's one that we need to start to have now because this is a long term issue. This is something that the province has done before. In two thousand eight, there was a very similar fiscal review that was undergone that sought to recognize some of the provincial downloads that had occurred in the past and and account for them. We're we're nearly twenty years since that date and the time for another review is now if we want to have sustainable growth in our province. So it's something that as your AML board member, I've spent a lot of time discussing on a provincial level with other AML representatives and I hope that it can find unanimous support here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Dufour. Counselor Hollingsworth?
Thank you, Counselor Dufour. Well said. Excellent summary. Thank you for allowing me to be on as your second or on this very important resolution. And I know you're working very hard on AML and you are a very loud voice, so continue on doing the good work you do. Just to add to your wonderful explanation, I just have two quick points. We talked about other municipalities in Ontario that have more tools, more revenue generating tools. We have seen it over and over again that there's a lot of disparity. There's a lot of inequality, which is not right. The other piece too is, correct me if I'm wrong, I think is we're still based on two thousand sixteen impact assessment. So again, our tools to generate revenue are so limited, the downloading continues. So thank you, Counselor Dufour, for having that loud voice for all of us.
Other councillors with, Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to Counselor Dufour for bringing this forward, especially at this time. I don't know if anyone has seen Premier Ford talk about politicians. And in a recent rambling on Instagram, he said that politicians should start giving people relief like we have. And that the municipal government needs to stop gouging you for taxes. And that's really an interesting perspective for the premier to take when he is continually downloading things onto the municipal government. We have no choice but to tax people at a municipal level to continue the the levels of service that folks need to continue to get services across Ontario. So I was very disappointed to hear that from the premier. When he talks about politicians, it, he should recognize that he himself is a politician who needs to collect funds from the folks here in Ontario to continue to keep things going. So I just wanted to again thank Counselor Dufour for that. I think things get very skewed when it comes to the voters and, you know, a regular resident, they don't. It it's difficult to discern what's municipal, what's what's provincial and what's federal and to have a premier coming in and skewing that further for folks is very frustrating, but motions like this helped clear it up, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
The councillors?
I had a stat, I was looking for it during Counselor Dufour's remarks, but it was essentially a comparison of what we spend on social services versus a comparison of what we see we receive in provincial grants. And it is several million dollars short in the provincial grant from what we spend on social services, so it.
Sorry?
Across the province. I had, there was a, there was a local stat. It was, it was multiple millions of dollars less that we received than what we put out on what ought to be really provincial services. So that is something that has grown over the years, continues to grow and is, you know, as Counselor Caputo essentially notes in her comments, the reason why the province is in such good fiscal shape because of the downloads that are being imposed on municipalities. So definitely an issue and a push that I support that I think we we all do. That said, all in favor of this motion?
That carries unanimously.
And to item nine point two. A motion by Councillors Gardi and Vezzo Allen, whereas the Auditor General's report and recommendations regarding public health Ontario were released on December sixth, two thousand twenty three. And whereas if this report's recommendations are accepted by the Ministry of Health, it would lead to the closure of six Public Health Ontario Labs, including the Public Health Lab in Sault Ste. Marie. And whereas these closures will result in the most northern Public Health Lab being situated in Thunder Bay, which will lead to further inequities in healthcare for residents in Northern Ontario compared to Southern Ontario. And whereas these closures will lead to a significant loss of public health expertise in Sault Ste. Marie and Northern Ontario, with the positions from the lab, including four medical laboratory technologists, ending at a time where public health expertise has proven to be a critical asset in assisting with the many public health challenges in Northern Ontario. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor Shoemaker communicate to Minister of Health Sylvia Jones and Sault Ste. Marie MVP Ross Romano on behalf of City Council and the residents of Sault Ste. Marie to advocate against the Auditor General's recommendations to close the Public Health Lab in Sault Ste. Marie due to the profound impact it will have on the public health of Northern Ontarians and Saultites.
Counselor Gardi.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think the motion speaks for itself. It's taken largely admittedly from the letter that we received asking us to to support this effort. You know, one thing that our local lab does is assist with helping health inspectors manage outbreaks and test for for whatever is circulating and getting that information promptly, which is obviously very helpful. You know, for the time of the leaning up to the pandemic and during the pandemic, the province, the federal government spoke about how important it was and the improvements they were going to make to care for our most vulnerable and our most elderly. And I think when you take away this type of capacity and expertise from a from a community or a region, you undoubtedly compromised the opportunity and the ability to keep institutions like nursing homes and and care homes safe. So I know that, I know that Shannon Morris, a medical laboratory technologist, along with Mr. Jessup, who's a former regional manager here. I know Counselor Vezzo Allen has some comments to make, which she will be further elaborating on on a few items, but I just think it's it's important for the community that we stand up for its health and safety when we have the opportunity. And I think this is clearly one of those times. Public health has never been more important. We've seen it. We managed well through the pandemic because of our efforts locally in public health, working with the city. So I'm hopeful, I'm positive that we'll get unanimous support for this, but I'll turn things over through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Vezzo.
Thank you. Gardi, Counselor Vezzo.
Thank you. This is a really important resolution and it's something I think we definitely need to fight for. Just even the travel of specimens, you know, it can lose the integrity of the testing. And that's really important. I had my own personal journey with that about ten years ago when my doctor thought I had full blown cervical cancer because they had to retest and it had to get. I think it was sent to Sudbury, Toronto. So I know how that feels from a personal perspective. Luckily, I'm here, so everything was not as we thought. But it definitely was about a month and a half of my life that I don't ever want to go through again because the the specimens had to go to Toronto and back. We have an aging population. Like Counselor Gardi said, just being able to test outbreaks. But the other important thing that they do is water testing. You know, we're surrounded by beaches and streams and public pools and people that have well water. So that in itself is really critical. And if you have to take a specimen and it goes, whether it goes to Thunder Bay or Toronto and it's going to take a week or two weeks, we don't know if there's, you know, E. coli in someone's well that they have to wait for. So I really want to thank Shannon for reaching out and and I hope that the province pays attention to the impact that this is going to have. And on an unrelated note, but connected, you know, Agoma Public Health voted unanimously not to have the merger go through with Sudbury today. And I think that really speaks to how we need to protect what we have in the north. In northern communities, it's not like you can drive two hours to the next community to get services. You know, we're looking at large distances. And I'm hopeful that the louder we get, maybe we will be heard and there'll be some reconsiderations regarding this. So thank you very much.
Counselor Vezzo Allen, other councillors with comments or questions on this?
I like that Counselor Vezzo Allen see this as very akin to our opposition to the merger of Agoma Public Health with Sudbury Public Health. And I think that it, as you take this expertise out of a community, it's unlikely that you will have it returned. And so it here is critical to the well being and efficient service of our community. So absolutely support this motion and we'll communicate that with the minister immediately.
Counselor Gardi?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I was remiss. I know that there is an effort to have a petition signed to this effect. I don't know if it is appropriate for me to ask if we could kind of disseminate the information as to how one could get a hold of that petition. Is that appropriate or not?
If I I I see there's some guests here in the audience who seem to have a petition on them. Not that I expect we'll be signing it at the moment, but if you wish to approach the mic and tell us how we can sign or how the community can sign that petition, just a red mic in the middle here. Thank you.
Shannon Morris, and I'm a medical laboratory laboratory technologist at Public Health Ontario Sault Ste. Marie Lab. So the petition that we have is Ontario wide. And it's, you could get ahold of me at my email address or my phone number. You come and see me after council, and I could hand out some information that you could provide to his family and coworkers. And it's a really important thing that we need to pay attention to everyone in Ontario, especially Sault Ste. Marie because we do have 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 a lot of health inequities in Northern Ontario. So to take something like Public Health Ontario Lab out of Sault Ste. Marie, it's a big deal. So so I don't know if I am able to say my email address now or.
If you're comfortable saying to the public.
So it's ShannonMorris1@gmail.com. And you could also pick it up at Public Health Lab in Sault Ste. Marie at one hundred and sixty McDougald Avenue. Yeah.
Thank you. That carries unanimously.
I have a motion by Councillor Hollingsworth, whereas section eighty seven of the Legislation Act two thousand and six defines newspaper and acts and regulations requiring publication as a document that is printed in sheet form, published at regular intervals, a week or less, circulated to the general public and consists primarily of news of current events of general interest journal. And whereas Ontario municipalities are required to follow prescribed publication and notice requirements of provincial acts and regulations. And whereas online digital news has become an important part of Canadians' news media diets, now therefore be it resolved that Council of Sault Ste. Marie does hereby request the provincial government to make an amendment to the Legislation Act two thousand and six. to make an amendment to the legislation act two thousand and six to include online publications as an acceptable means of complying with public notice requirements that refer to newspaper publication and provincial acts and regulations. And that this resolution be forwarded to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, MPP Ross Romano, Sault Ste. Marie, Associations of Municipality of Ontario and Federation of Northern Ontario Municipalities.
Councillor Hollingsworth.
Thank you. The resolution is quite clear. There's a couple of communities in Ontario that have already passed this, such as North Bay, Perry Sound, to name a few. And I just want to mention one point. I appreciate the comments that one of our local media partners have been outlining. One particular person reached out to me to say that, well, nothing's stopping us to put our notices digitally on media now. That's correct, but I just want to outline why we're actually doing. The problem is that the legislation that specifically requires publication in a newspaper, we need to make sure that the legislature covers all types of media. And it's very important that we input digital so that as we go in the future, it's a legal document and municipalities can act on it. It's, it's very important just to have that little piece updated. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hollingsworth. Councillor Spina, anything to add?
No, that's okay, Mr. Mayor. It's just one of those housekeeping issues that I think is important for us to bring forward when we find them so that we can be more efficient in the future. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Spina. Favor?
Item nine point four, a motion by councillors Caputo and Spina, whereas downtown revitalization is slated to be done this construction season, which will include new sidewalks from Bruce Street to East Street. And whereas part of the objective of the downtown revitalization is to rejuvenate Queen Street as a year-round main hub for locals and tourists to enjoy. And whereas some of the major barriers that Sault Ste. Marie's downtown face are winter-related, such as poor access and visibility to storefronts due to growing snowbanks and hard-to-clear sidewalks. And whereas clear sidewalks would allow safer commutes for pedestrians, allow citizens to remain active in an outdoor setting year-round, as well as providing much-needed access for anyone with accessibility issues. And whereas the use of large quantities of salt to control winter conditions has caused concern for the health of the Great Lakes. And whereas cities around the world with harsh winters have successfully implemented and maintained heated sidewalks, such as Reykjavik, Iceland, Edmonton, Alberta, and Holland, Michigan. And whereas these cities have cited that their heated sidewalks save their communities money by reducing the number of slip and falls, eliminating the need to sand, salt and plow, and reduce the damage caused by frost heave and snowplows, therefore extending the life of the sidewalks. And whereas quality of life is an identified strategic pillar for the corporation of the city of Sault Ste. Marie, and it is imperative that our winters be made as bearable as possible for our citizens by providing safe, walkable areas for citizens to be able to remain active and to enjoy all that our downtown has to offer. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to report back to council with the cost of implementing and maintaining heated sidewalks from Bruce Street to East Street. Further be it resolved that staff compare best practices used in areas that have successfully implemented these systems and include any viable possibilities within the report. And further be it resolved that a cost analysis of average expenditures on sidewalk repairs, slip and falls, sidewalk plowing, snow clearing and sanding and salting all be presented to council within the report.
Councillor Caputo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to start out by saying, we, we, I mean, throughout the motion, you heard the benefits that I, the reason why I brought this forward. But not long ago, I was in a room where the term world-class was used. And the conversation was about different places around the world and the signature pieces that made their community a world-class destination. And when I think about the Sioux, I really think that we are underselling ourselves. For too long, we have allowed the, the loudest voices, many times of naysayers, to beat us down and not allow us to explore every avenue in showcasing who we are and all that we have. So I think that, you know, the thought of heated sidewalks in an envi, in a place like Sault Ste. Marie seems crazy. But I, I think that every idea, you know, that is outside of the box always sounds crazy until it's implemented and you start to see the benefits of it. With that being said, no matter the result of this decision tonight, I will continue to bring forward ideas to revitalize not only what the area of the downtown looks like, because I think that is what we focus on, what the downtown looks like. But how folks in our community can enjoy it and better interact in the downtown. I think we can make the downtown look as beautiful as we want, but the reality is five months of the year is absolutely covered in stuff. So this could really improve accessibility for folks with mobility issues. Myself, as a, as a mom, I know what it's like trying to push a stroller through a bunch of snow and for a lot of elderly folks who we are seeing occupy the downtown. But even if we cannot make this idea a reality, I think we need to look at how we are presenting ourselves and how we care for our assets. So moving forward, I would, I'd like to see a report and get this information, and I hope we can support it.
Thank you, councillor Caputo. Councillor Spina, a second or did you want to add anything to that?
Comments or questions or both?
The floor is yours.
Sure, thank you. So to start off, I, I will say the last time Queen Street had a reconstruction was about fifty years ago. So we're in a position now where it's about to be reconstructed again, and we're going to live with it for the next fifty years. So having said that, councillor Caputo brought this motion forward. I think it's important for us to explore all options when we know that we're going to be living with something for fifty years and to get all of the answers that we need to make a fully informed decision. So I'm, I'm happy that she brought this forward for discussion here tonight to talk about how we can improve our community. Now, with that said, I do have a few questions that I'd like to have answered myself before we have any kind of a vote on this motion. I, I think it would go to Ms. Hamilton Beach. Because Mr. Girardi is not here in his absence. So we heard about some other communities that, that have similar or at least very similar areas. In those communities, would you, I don't know if you know the answer to this or not, would they have similar snowfall to us?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Spina. What we learned when we just did our, our winter control audit is that we are an exception. And we are looking at an average in recent years of three hundred and twenty centimeters of snow. So that's over ten feet through a season.
Right.
That's not what we're getting this year, but it is absolutely the average by our data. So.
There, I guess we do have to take this year out of, out of consideration. So, I mean, we've seen other areas locally where there's private properties that have this type of a driveway or a walkway, an entrance way, but it is covered by a canopy. So we do see where it does melt a lot of the snow, but again, it's covered by a canopy. If we were talking about Queen Street and the plows went down Queen Street, what can you tell me, what would happen with the snow that would be deposited onto the sidewalk from the plows?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Spina. That's absolutely a concern of ours. As we're all well aware, we plow to the side at this point in time, and we end up with a berm or a bank that abuts currently the sidewalk and/or the boulevard, as you can refer to it. So it's certainly our understanding with this type of system that that bank would need removal on a constant basis. So if you're looking at maintenance costs and obstacles, you would have to have that pathway for the water that's melted to in fact get to the catch basins, which are generally in line with your curb and gutter.
Right. And so would there be a risk or an additional risk? If those banks were there and, and were warmed from underneath, would there be an additional risk posed for slips and falls because they'd be melting from underneath and potentially freezing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Spina. It's certainly our understanding that these systems would not take to melting the depth of a bank nor the compaction that that snow is placed there. It is more the free-falling snow that, as, as you say, in many cases, it's a covered system. So we do not believe they are designed to melt through a bank material, and that would still remain required to be removed. And I would suggest that each removal is in line of forty to sixty thousand dollars per winter. So if we are doing that on an event-by-event basis, it's quite costly.
Right. Okay. So fair to say then, sounds like a great idea. Maybe not in our community. Is that kind of your position or your opinion?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Spina. In, in our maintenance opinion and public works opinion, it would not be advisable.
Perfect. Okay. Those are my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Spina. Councillor Bruni?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Susan Hamilton Beach. The first question is regarding the water that's on the sidewalk, where would that drain if those sidewalk, if those snowbanks are not removed on a constant basis?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. Certainly at this point in time with the grading typically, it would go to any catch basins and it would certainly be what we would look to. Most likely, my engineering friends and their consultants would have to look at designing it so that all that water off of the sidewalk could in fact get to a catch basin.
So the banks would have to be removed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. My next question is to Mr. Romeo. Carl, from the construction cost of six million right now to resurface and plants and sidewalks, et cetera, how much would this cost if we went with heated sidewalks? Approximate cost?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni. I did get a chance to speak to a mechanical designer, a mechanical consultant who'd be skilled in, in designing such systems. And he had a look at it. And it was his, for two sidewalks from Bruce to East would be a cost of twenty-five million dollars for the upfront capital costs. And in his estimation, one and a half million in added operational costs, which would cover the extra snow removal, blowing of snow on a sometimes daily basis, those types of things.
And would you know what the lifespan would be for the underground heating system? Or if there is a, a crack in the pipe, cost-wise, approximate cost to repair?
Mr. Mayor, to councillor Bruni, I don't have that information. It's not something that's in our general wheelhouse. Although it's a good point that anytime there'd be any kind of underground repairs to make sewer lateral repairs, PUC water repairs, you would be cutting through sizable sections of this underground, not underground, in concrete piping or electrical matting, if that was the, the, what you're using in order to affect your repair. And there would be a very, very comprehensive repair to the heating system.
Thank you. I, I guess my comment is, first of all, I break, I can, I thank councillor Caputo and Spina for bringing this forward. But for me to approve a twenty-five million dollar project is a hefty cost to taxpayers. And of course, we would all try to go after the government to provide some type of relief for us, but twenty-five million dollars, one point five million to provide maintenance on a yearly basis. I, I think we can use that money more for basically our, our infrastructure, our repairs, our roads, our sewers, et cetera. So I will prob, I will vote against this and thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bruni. Councillor Hollingsworth?
Thank you. I'll start with a comment. I just want to say again, councillor Caputo, you know, you're always thinking outside the box, and I hate using that, but really, that's great. You brought, you know, the New Year's Eve idea. We as council need to look at best practices. We need to really look around this world, this global world and look for the wild components that make us unique and make us stand out from other communities. That's the way that we're going to attract new residents. That's how we're going to attract tourism. And we are already doing that. But I just want to say, councillor Caputo, keep thinking this way. And I want to encourage staff to keep thinking of the wild components. And with our new CAO, Tom there, I hope you challenge our staff to make sure that they are looking at best practices and something unique that can be brought back to council. Having said that, Holland, Iceland and so forth. Iceland is volcanic. They actually have a natural way to heat the sidewalks using the volcanic underneath. Holland also has somewhat natural, Holland's snowmelt system uses waste heat cooling water from the city's James D. Young Power Plant, okay, blocks from the downtown along the lake of Mactana waterfront. Holland maintains it at eight million dollars approximately to ensure that the circling hot water derived from the Holland Board of Public Works in the cooling system go through the different tubular pipelines that councillor Bruni was talking about. So having said that, I don't support this. I'd rather see if we're going to ever spend a chunk of money like this, again, to look at more wild components, something more unique, or to maybe invest it back into the downtown with our merchants to create a more of a consistent theme, to create a theme type downtown. For example, like Niagara Lake, every building is historical and turn of the century look, and that's their theme. Maybe we should look at what the theme is for our downtown. We have sandstone. Maybe all the buildings should really promote the sandstone. But anyway, having said that, again, thank you for bringing the idea to us. I'm not going to support it at this time. That's.
Thank you, councillor Hollingsworth. Councillor Gardi?
Good idea, councillor Caputo. I just don't know how practical it would be for us, considering we deliberated for a couple of few meetings about spending eighteen million to do the whole downtown and ended up saying we're going to spend six million in kind of every couple of years. So I just don't think it's viable. I don't think it's something that we can afford. I don't want to delay this project anymore and give staff more work to do. We need to get this project going and keep bringing the ideas. We'll keep supporting you or not, but I won't be supporting it at this point. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Gardi. Councillor Kinnock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Caputo, I do like your idea and I like the way you're thinking. But you're thinking too small. What you want and the system that we would have to build would be an energy district. It wouldn't just be eating the sidewalks. It'd be changing all the buildings downtown for the heating and cooling infrastructure through like Holland with the hot water. When I lived overseas, my building was heated through heating district energy. So it's a big boiler somewhere, a different location. It's pumped through the downtown core into different buildings. And it does eat up the whole downtown. It does reduce the snow in the whole downtown, the roads, the sidewalks, all walking paths, everything. But this enters district is such a big endeavor to take on. There is a program in Canada, which I did some research on, the Canada Infrastructure Bank, which helps with cost upfront installation of the system. One is currently being installed in Markham, Ontario. Whereas Vancouver, Halifax, Charlottetown, Iqualowit, communities, Yukon and Northwest Territories are either building or upgrading current versions of a system of a energy district. Heating and cooling emissions are the third largest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Canada. So if we were incorporating the buildings with the downtown plan and everything, I would be on board with this, but for twenty-five million just for sidewalks. And the way we push through the downtown revitalization plan in the summer, I, this something that would have been really nice to look at because we could have reached our net goal. Nets downtown, and we could have changed the culture downtown and we had clean sidewalks all winter and maybe a warmer environment in a downtown core to have more street parties for your ball drop, other things like that. I will, unfortunately, I won't be able to support you today, but thank you for bringing the idea forward.
Thank you, councillor Kinnock. Councillor Vezel?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will say, and, and just a comment and possibly a consideration to alter the resolution. The accessibility folks were very excited about the prospect of potentially heated sidewalks, which definitely when you're in a mobility device, makes a huge impact. I'm wondering if councillors Caputo and Spina would do, because I also don't want construction of Queen Street to be delayed, to amend the motion that it's for staff to take a look at possibilities for city owned public spaces, new ones, to incorporate even in our entrance ways, walkways, some heated sidewalks in the, in any future new builds. So that it's still something that we are thinking about and considering, but not right now with, with this project.
I think that's most likely an entirely new motion, councillor Vezwell.
It would be.
For sure, yeah.
It would be a new motion.
Certainly couldn't amend it in the midst of this discussion.
I, I think it's important for us to consider alternatives, especially when we're looking at the environmental impact. So I think if councillors Caputo and Spina would be willing to amend it, I hope that my colleagues around the table would be in agreement to that.
I suspect there might be the seeds of a future motion there.
Yeah, so definitely would be willing to look at it in the future. Also, at, you know, the consensus of, of what folks are saying, perhaps we can look at a different system, not in ground system, but perhaps like a different system of keeping these sidewalks and the banks clear since we are putting all this money and, and revitalization into the downtown. So I look forward to future conversations with people around the table about how we can best utilize our, this newly revitalized space.
Any other councillors with questions?
Mr. Mayor, on the timeline, if a report like this were to be prepared by staff, what would it take and what would be the implications on having Queen Street done this year?
Is that there? That's fair. Staff was looking at releasing the tender for Queen Street in the next two to three weeks, Carl, if I'm not correct.
Mr. Mayor, March twenty seventh is the release of the tender documents.
March twenty seventh, so next council meeting, being the twentieth would be too early. The way the resolution is written now, it would require us to get a consultant report. I think staff have done some initial legwork and shared the initial cost estimates from council. But that would push out the release of the tender and then the timing required through our procurement policy to issue a document, get responses, review them, et cetera. Has the implication where it could push the construction to next year if we were to proceed with the resolution as written.
Mr. C A O, I'm, I'm never against looking at a new idea. I do however think that it took us, as councillor Gardy noted, quite some time to land on a resolution to the Queen Street debate. We finally landed on six million. And I suspect that adding twenty five million is going to be far beyond what this council is willing to add to the budget. I also will note that if he were here, Mr. White, our former C A O would say that there were, when they built this building, heated walkways under the front steps, which worked for about a year. And every time they turned on would shake the entire building because of the energy use that they required. And I'd heard that story from him multiple times. And so as it turned out, they never worked as they were intended to. Now, I'm sure the technology has advanced in many years since then, but I think our winters are simply too old, snowy and all that for this technology to succeed. So for a number of reasons, those included, I am going to oppose this resolution.
Vote is open. Council in favor of the motion? Opposed? That is defeated.
So councillor Caputo voting in the affirmative and voting in the negative. That will bring us to bylaws. I have a motion by councillors Vezwell and Bruni, resolved that all bylaws under item twelve of the agenda under date February twenty twenty four be approved.
All in favor?
And I have a motion by councillors Vezwell and Kinnock, resolved that this council now adjourned.
All in favor? Thank you, council.